And do I have, um, do we have the information?
All right.
Do I have a motion to, or do we have, do we have a report?
A brief report.
Thank you.
This item was actually approved at the October 1st meeting. And when we tried to execute the loan documents, there was a requirement for a resolution that showed the approval. So this is actually an item you previously approved and we are doing some housekeeping with this resolution.
So we just need a motion to authorize the resolution?
So I move we authorize the sole source procurement of a Pierce Aero XT Type 1 fire engine from Golden State Fire Apparatus in the amount of $7,29,000.
Seven hundred and twenty-nine.
Just seven hundred and twenty-nine thousand, five hundred and eighty-nine dollars and that seventy-two cents to be financed over a period of five years.
Go ahead. Thank you very much. All in favor?
Three yes votes, Councilmember Castellano, and Arroyo absent. Motion carries.
All right. Well, thank you very much for letting us do that and I'll invite the planning commissioners to come back. And when they're settled, we will start the joint session that we're, we were expecting to do. We ready to call the next meeting to order? So I will now call the Joint Planning Commission City Council Meeting to Order. Do we need to do roll call for this one?
Mayor Seaman?
Here.
Councilmember Castellano?
Here.
Councilmember Mezner?
Here.
Councilmember Allison?
Here.
Councilmember Burgele?
Here.
Councilmember Arroyo is absent. Commissioner Reagan?
I'm here.
Commissioner Ames?
Here.
Commissioner Mayer?
Here.
And I'm sorry, I don't have your name.
Ariaga?
Here.
Thank you. And Commissioner Bonino is absent.
Okay. So now we are going to hear our second update on the housing element. Oh, no, first off, I will ask for public comment. Do we have any public comment before we start on the item that we're talking about today, which is the housing element? Is anybody here for that reason? All right. Seeing none, I will invite staff to come up and do the presentation of our, our second presentation for the housing element.
So this meeting is the second joint study session. We had the first one on October 1st. The content of the first one dealt with the proposed goals, policies, and implementation programs, and it left out a really big core issue that all cities have to grapple with when they update a housing element, and that is the site inventory. Basically, state law requires that cities provide, or allocate enough land with specific, with specific numbers of housing units to meet the predicted housing demand based on anticipated job growth and pop, natural population growth. So, we're gonna dive right in. We have three hours. There's no reason it needs to take that long. Let me get through at least the first part and then we can do, kinda, interrupt me. I just wanna make sure we get through all of it. Oh. This is... No. Oh. We won't be going through it in, in order. Okay. So a little background on community outreach, that's an important part of the housing element process. We started with a big housing workshop in April 2019 at the Werfinger. We had 200 people in attendance, more or less. We emailed stakeholders, that's anyone in any way related to housing, so housing advocates, affordable housing developers, the county, basically everyone we could think of was emailed, and then here we are with our two study sessions. That was the invite to the April 10th meeting. So the, there's two parts to the housing element. There is the housing plan, which contains goals, policies, and implementation programs. That's around 60 pages long. And then there is a technical appendix, which contains things like an explanation of your community outreach, an assessment of needs in the community, housing resources, and the site inventory, as well as past accomplishments. So, again, we just touched briefly on community outreach. The rest of the meeting will be dealing with the site inventory and only the site inventory. Buckle up. This requires a delving into some tedious state law, but we're gonna get through it. So first off, cities are required to show that they have enough vacant and underutilized land to meet the housing creation target set by the state, also known as the Regional Housing Needs Allocation, or the RENA. All the nods were up on that. Recent legislation means stricter requirements and more scrutiny. We have a very busy legislator and legislature in Sacramento. They continually tighten these rules to make it more, you know, more and more difficult to really makes, make sure that cities are not skirting their responsibilities. Notably, there was a recent law passed one year ago that lets the state sue cities and levy fines for actually not being in compliance with housing elements. Huntington Beach is now being sued by the, the state of California for failing to maintain a compliant housing element. So this is big, this is big medicine. So yes, it's now more difficult to create an acceptable site inventory. So if you had experience with a previous one, it's no longer that easy. RENA is the state mandated housing creation target. The targets are based on predicted job growth and population growth. Eureka's RENA for the next eight years is 952 units, which works out to 119 units per And they need to be broken down into the different income levels. So 402 of those 952 are above moderate income, or intended for above moderate income households; 172 are for moderate income households; 147 for low income; and 231 for very low income. So you can see, if that was charted, it would, you know, make like a U shape. And this is a slide I like to bring up, because people say, "Well, what does it actually mean to be low income?" Well, the definitions are based on the number of people in your household. So, if you can read this chart, if you're a one-person household, just a single adult that lives alone, and you are low income, you can afford a total gross rent of 800, and I believe that's $19 per month. So that includes your rent and utilities. In comparison, someone that is a very low-income person, or very low-income household, if there was a couple, they would be able to pay only $600 a month. A moderate income, one person could pay all the way up to 1,259. My eyes aren't that good. So, anyway, just a little background. So when people say, "Oh, this is affordable housing," this is oftentimes working-class housing. These are many times people with jobs. The rent is not always, you know, as direly low as some people would say, like, "Oh, they live in affordable housing, they pay $72 per month." A lot of these people are actually paying, you know, $5, $6, $700 a month. So, how do you allocate 952 units? Well, there's a two-step process. Step one is what we call the non-site-specific allocations. These are things like ADUs, accessory dwelling units, or mother-in-law units, and garage conversions. We call them non-site-specific because it's impossible for us to predict every single house that is going to build a mother-in-law unit. It would, it's literally impossible. Step two is the site-specific allocations, and this is really what historically the state has focused on and cities have focused on. And these are sites that you can predict. You can take a specific address that has a large vacant lot and say, "There's a vacant lot. We, we allocate 10 units of affordable housing to that site. Therefore, we can demonstrate that we have the capacity if that property owner ever decided to build it. We, they, we know that they have the space for it." So keep that in mind, there's two steps. Eureka's strategy is, again, to plan for more housing than we need. And on our, actually, to be precise, 55% would be on a non-site-specific basis, so those things like mother-in-law units, garage conversions, buying a big Victorian and converting it to apartments. And of that, we estimate that 6%, or 42, would be very, very small in size, the square footage of the unit, and as such would qualify for very low-income renters. So housing units can get down as small as a little over 200 square feet. So the thought is someone would convert a one-car garage. That's 250 square feet, and as a result, the rent would only be $400, $500 per month. The next step up from that, we estimate there will be 60 low-income units. So again, they could afford to pay just a little bit more. So similar, if someone carves up a big Victorian and they make, you know, four, 400-square-foot apartments, we estimate that 60 would fit into that affordability level. The vast majority would be moderate income. These would be ADUs and conversions that end up being, you know, 500, 600, 700 square feet, more conventional. And that a certain number of them would be single-family homes mostly, or brand-new multifamily. Someone that builds a brand-new fourplex, you know, 850 square feet per unit, two-bedroom, garage, et cetera. And those, we estimate, would clearly be above moderate income that would be required to live there. So on the left, we had our non-site-specific. Switching over to step two, we have our site-specific. So in total, we've said that 45% of our units are going to be allocated, or accounted for on a site-specific basis. So the first category is very low income, and you're like, "Wow, 277. We're gonna get there." That's basically because we have certain sites, bigger sites, downtown sites, urban sites, where large affordable housing developments have traditionally been built and it's possible to build. So Danco's example of the veterans' housing, that would fall into this category of very low income, and that's historically what we've seen. The Lodge project was around 50 units, the vets' housing was around 50 units, and the reason for that is that if you're doing a tax credit project, it makes sense to go big. It's a lot of paperwork, it's very complex to put together a development plan like what Danco does. So if they're gonna put in all that time and energy and money, it doesn't make sense for them to try to build seven units, right? It makes sense for them to try to build 50. So because we have that track record, we're estimating, or we're predicting it will continue along that, those lines. The next category is low income. So we said 110 units would just be small, basically. We didn't put any moderate income units in there, because those were accounted for on the non-site-specific basis, because ADUs are a non-site-specific tool. And finally, we have quite a few vacant lots that we actually came up with around town, just places where homes have burned down, places where single-family homes and ADUs can be built. I have a map, I'll show you in a minute. So 43%, or 369 of the units, would be above moderate income. So that would be somebody that owns a piece of vacant, vacant lot, 6,000 square feet next to Carson Park, decides to build a new single-family house and an ADU. That would be a specific site, and those would be the types of developments we would expect to see there. So, like we talked about, non-site-specific are accessory dwelling units. Small lots and conservation subdivisions, I don't remember if you recall from the zoning code, we allow some lots to be as small as 2,000 square feet. So one conventionally-sized lot could be carved up into a small subdivision with three 2,000-square-foot lots, and small, single-family homes would get built on those. Conservation subdivisions are when someone has a piece of land that's impacted by a steep slope or a gulch. We allow the person to cluster the lots in the buildable portion of the lot of the property, and then they retain the sloopy, wet, wetlindy, gulty part as a conservation easement. So those types of developments accomplish two things. They let people opportunistically fit development on the parts of the site that are able to receive development, that are near utilities, and they also preserve open space, they preserve trees and wetland habitat like that. And the last one is the division or conversion of existing space. This is the low-hanging fruit. It's not super exciting, but a lot of people come up to the counter in the planning department and say, "Hey, I have a triplex. It was built in the 80s. It has a garage. I would rather have a fourplex with no garage than a triplex with a garage. Can I convert the garage?" So now, in our zoning code, we have provisions that say, "Yes, let er rip. Create a fourplex." The other way, the other way is someone buys a house, or perhaps like a large Victorian, and again, they carve it up into two units, or three units, or four units, and this is a very cost-effective and common way to build housing. It costs much less to convert an existing structure typically than to build something from the ground up. There's always the question of estimating affordability. Oh. Oh, yeah, to build, yeah. So, we performed a rent survey, and the purpose of this was to be able to estimate how much it would cost to rent an apartment. And what we did is we looked at a certain number of apartments, and we said, "What was the cost per square foot?" So we looked at the rent, we divided by the square feet of the unit, and then we came up with this multiplier. So unsurprisingly, if you have a studio, maybe it's 400 square feet, it will cost you more on a per-square-foot basis, $1.38, maybe even a little higher, to rent that place. On the other end of the spectrum, if you rent a four-bedroom house, it's gonna cost a lot more to rent the total amount than a studio apartment, but the cost per square foot is actually the lowest. It's a little bit less than a dollar a foot. So why this is important is we've needed to demonstrate to HCD, the government agency that regulates this, that we can realistically have an idea of what our anticipated units will rent for, and what income levels we'll be able to live there. So using this metric, we've said, "Well, if somebody takes a one-car garage that's 250 square feet and they convert it, using a formula like this, we can estimate that it would rent for around $500." That's a very small apartment, if you've ever been in a one-car garage. So this is just a math problem that explains how that would work. An existing two-car garage would be 484 square feet, converted to a studio apartment, 484 times $1.38 per square foot results in a rent of $668 per month. Add in $100 for utilities, and you're looking at a total housing cost of $768. $768 is less than 839, which is the threshold set by the state for affordability for a low-income, one-person household. So that's the, that's the math going on behind the curtain when estimating affordability. Accessory dwelling units. Again, I know you have some familiarity with this, but we'll just run through it. This is a small apartment that's associated with a single-family home and located on the same site. They can be attached, detached, or created by converting his existing space. And we've seen an increase in applications. We used to build between 2010 and 2017 around three per year. Now we're getting applications for eight to 10 per year. So we did the ADU fair, there's more interest in this. There were some perks. And also, brand-new thing coming out, the state just passed a law, starting January 1st, you can now have two ADUs associated with every house. The triplexization of single-family neighborhoods. And you can also now add ADUs to multifamily sites. So you could be a person that owns a triplex and say, "I would like to put two ADUs on the site with my triplex." So the state's pushing this really hard. This is, this is the backbone of housing in most communities, because most residential land in California, the overwhelming majority is single-family homes. So the logic goes that there's just no way to meet our housing demand if that land can't be used to increase housing supply. So small lot conservation subdivisions, I mentioned that briefly. We now allow 2,000-square-foot lots in multifamily zones. We don't require street frontage. You can access off an alley or an alley, or an access easement. Conservation subdivisions allow you to have smaller lots in exchange for placing conservation easement on 50% of the original lot area. Here's an example, right out of our zoning code. Each one of those kind of little subdivisions you can see is the size of a conventional lot. So over on, oh, there you go. So over on this side, they've built three houses, three small cottages, each on its own lot, in what was previously the space of one lot. Over here, it's just split into two. And this is what a conservation subdivision looks like. So here's the road. This is the buildable portion of the lot. This is the flat stuff up at the top. This is gulch and steep rainy wetness. So this is all left alone. A conventional subdivision would try to put evenly-sized lots across all of this space, which is basically impossible to build your house in the middle of a gulch. And there's many reasons why we don't want people to build houses in gulches. Division or conversion of existing space, in our zoning code, we allow, we have parking requirements that say, if you divide one large house into multiple apartments, you don't need to build parking for it, because oftentimes that prevents a person from being able to do the project to begin with. You can also convert garages to serve multifamily uses, to create additional units. You can turn a triplex into a quadplex by converting the garage. And we just had a woman call me this week who wanted to do exactly that, and I dragged, I dragged my finger down the page and got to the exemption and was like, "Yes, you can do it. Convert that garage." So it was a good feeling. So our new rules are actually, are actually working. Okay, how, how we doing? This is a little pause, and we're all, we're all tracking. Go ahead.
This may be a really, I don't know, obvious question, but since we haven't had any growth, real increase in our population, I'm wondering what the states, why something, there's like this flat line in our community, and I know a lot of other cities are growing, but, but why would we be required to do so much housing when there's really a flat line in growth?
Mostly it's job growth. Between 2010 and 2018, Eureka created 1,800 jobs, which was only matched by McKinleyville. So if you compare us to, you know, Fortuna and Arcata, we create more jobs than they do, but they build dramatically more housing than we do. So the state basically is looking at that metric and saying, like, "Eureka makes jobs, it needs to build housing." Because if you don't build your housing near your jobs, you're creating, you're creating a commuter situation, kind of forced. Because we have built a fair amount of homes in McKinleyville and Fortuna over the, over the last decade, a surprising amount.
Okay.
Does that answer your question?
Well, yes, except for most of the cities, you know, a lot of the big cities, it takes 30 minutes to get to your house, just, you know. I mean, it's similar distance. It's just because they're each little tiny cities right next to each other, you know. So it's just an interesting way of determining, because the state's so vast in, in diversity, you know, like farmland, for instance, versus, anyway, just a...
Understood. That's a, that's a, that's a common question.
Could you comment, as I understand it, the state assigns RENA numbers to the county as a whole?
Mm-hmm.
And then the county, Humboldt County Association of Governments, they're the ones that divide those, that county-wide number into the different communities. And so if I understand it right, clarify if I don't, it's the, it's HCOG that is able to look and say, "Yeah, Eureka produces a lot of jobs, but we also got a lot of, you know, Cutton and Myrtle Town, which isn't Eureka, a lot of people live there." Can you comment about how HCOG sorts that out?
The, the total number for the county comes down, comes down from the state, and then it's up to the cities to determine the specific formula that they want to use to divide out the units. And that's based on natural population growth, people having kids, and it's based on jobs. And that's really it. That's, that's the two, the two markers. So they estimated through, you know, economic statistics, they estimate that Eureka will create more jobs, you know, proportional to the rest of the county, and therefore should create a larger amount of the housing.
Or HCOG might be able to decide that, "Yeah, Eureka's gonna create, I don't know, 1,000 jobs, but we're only gonna require them to have 500 housing units because we recognize that the other 500 are gonna come from Cutton and Myrtle Town," or whatever. Is that what they do?
I was on that, I was on that committee, actually, so, but I don't remember what the exact, the exact numbers were. But I actually fought, and planners from all of the cities agreed, although some of the, some of the other HCOG members weren't as thrilled. We did not have to do as much as, Eureka took on a smaller piece of the pie, and we divided it more evenly than some really pro-transportation people would have liked to have seen, which I'm also very pro-transportation, but given the numbers that we have, we're already gonna be doing a great deal of work, and so... So we did do that. We discussed it at HCOG, and we kept Eureka's minimal compared to what it could have been.
We good to move on? Okay. So this is the non-site-specific housing target table. This is taken out of the housing element. So what it does is if you look at the rows, you see 2020 all the way through 2027, and then it's broken down into the three different categories. So we're, our targets are 20 ADUs per year, all the way through, 20 small lot and conservation subdivisions, which will actually be less, there are 20 housing units will be created, so a smaller number of subdivisions, obviously. And then that 20 units of housing will be created by dividing and converting existing space. So when you add those up over the entire planning period of eight years, you come up with 160 of each type, or 480, which is where you get to roughly the 952. These, I, I feel really confident and happy about these, because this is really what we see come across the counter every day. This is grassroots-level housing creation. This is mom and pops that are just saying, "Hey, I've got this house, I wanna build an ADU. Hey, I've got this piece of property, I inherited it from my grandpa. Can I put a few houses back on it?" You know, "Hey, I've got this big Victorian. I, I think I can make more money converting it to a triplex." So, so this really does form a very important element of our, of our strategy. And again, as the state requires, we need to specify affordability, because the state doesn't want you building all housing for rich people, you know? It wouldn't meet the needs of the community. So of ADUs, we've said that 16 of the 160 will be very low income, and that's because they'll be very small, very, very small. We estimate that 30 will be low income, because they'll be very small, and 114 will be moderate income, because ADUs and mother-in-law units typically don't rent for more than $700, $800 a month. It's unusual to see an ADU that rents for $1,400. That would be a really epic ADU. Small lot and conservation subdivisions, you'll see 40 moderate incomes and 120 above moderates. The 120 above moderates are single-family homes, and the 40 are the associated ADUs that come along with those single-family homes. It's relatively common now in our recent projects to see people that are, when they build a ground-up, brand-new, single-family detached house, they're just building ADUs now above the garage. It's just kind of becoming a standard best practice, and I think, you know, the real estate market is kind of rewarding that. And then division or conversion of existing space, these ones are a little bit more evenly spread. We're saying that some of these garages, some of these, you know, houses will get carved up to create very low-income units, very small units. Similarly, with low income, 30, moderate income would be 94. That's really what we think the bulk of them will be. Rents can be a little bit lower if you can convert a Victorian into a triplex, obviously cheaper than you can build a brand-new triplex. So that's why those are set under moderate income. And then some of them will be above moderate income, they'll just be, you know, bigger or, or appreciably nicer. So all of that, again, sums to 480. Changing gears. Now, we're moving off non-site-specific, which is maybe the more intuitive, and now we're getting into the, into the trickier stuff. And this is where cities bog down into multiple year-long struggles sometimes to, to allocate their units on a site-by-site basis, because it is very tricky. One reason it's tricky is because the state has a very strict definition of vacant and non-vacant. To HCD, vacant means a grass or gravel lot, which has no structures of any kind, which generates no economic activity of any kind. So if you have a parking lot that people rent parking spaces on, you know, office workers, that's a non-vacant site. If you have a little tiny ice cream shack that is in the middle of a 10,000-square-foot parcel, that is a non-vacant site. If you have anything going on, even a site that's a gravel lot that is regularly used by people that sell blankets or pumpkins, that is also considered a non-vacant site. So cities have struggled mightily to come up with pristine grass lots that have nothing on them. So state law requires the distinction, no buildings, no paving, no existing uses. The other big limitation that the state puts on you is they say that you need to have a half-acre site to allocate affordable units. And this gets back to what I said a little bit before, the Dancos of California, they build customarily bigger developments. They do 30 units, 40 units, 50 units, 60 units. So what cities had been doing is they were taking little sites, conventional, you know, lots, 5,000, 6,000 square feet, that a single-family home would be on, you know, about that size, and say, "Oh, yeah, we're gonna get, an affordable housing developer is gonna build a sixplex." And it basically never happened, ever. So the state added this to the requirement and said, "You know what? Get real. No one builds affordable housing on anything smaller than a half-acre." And a half-acre is 21,780 square feet. Our standard lot size in Eureka is 6,000 square feet. So this would mean that you would need to find, you know, over three pristine, standard-sized city lots in order to meet this requirement. However, they did... However, um, they did give us a workaround. They said, basically, if you have a lot of evidence and you demonstrate very specific steps that you're going to take, we will let you allocate affordable units to sites smaller than a half-acre, which I believe we've done and we'll get into in a minute. And also, on the previous slide, when we talked about vacant and non-vacant, they'll let you put those units on a non-vacant site if you also do, you know, if you have a lot of evidence and you really can demonstrate how you're going to make it happen. Again, there's a whole history on this. Uh, cities have been bamboozling HCD for a long time. They would put sites in their inventory that were tidelands, like literally underwater, and would allocate like thirty units of affordable housing. So it's been a cat-and-mouse thing. I don't think we've done that up here, but, you know, it's a one-size-fits-all-type state law situation. You know, we're not Santa Monica. So Eureka's strategy boiled down is this. That's our non-site-specific on the left. And on our right, our site-specific meets kind of these different proportions. They're roughly interlock, you know, where the peaks, you know, we, we cover a lot of ground or we fulfill our requirements for moderate income and above moderate income quite a bit on non-site-specific. And then site-specific is mostly very low income and above moderate. So Eureka strategy, where should this stuff go? Here's some available strategies. We can sprinkle out a few units on many parcels. We could add a lot of units on a few sites. We can concentrate units on publicly-owned property, which might conflict with city priorities, housing versus parking. Or we can concentrate units on privately-owned property, which is not pop, uh, popular with property owners. And it's also just a low chance that it will be built. If you imagine yourself, if you owned a beautiful, large downtown site in Eureka that was zoned to have fifty units, why would you build affordable housing if you don't want to? You know, there's not, we don't really have much of a way to inspire property owners to do that. It's their land, they can choose to build or not build, um, which is a challenge. So what is the right strategy? I always like to point this out. There's no right and wrong way to do land use. There's just, you know, advantages and disadvantages. Um, it depends on the judgment of local leaders. However, the end result must comply with state law. We can't make things up. The current strategy is to make the most use of our non-site-specific allocations. Again, I said about fifty percent of our units are going on nine-site-specific, um, on a non-site-specific basis. So this is our ADUs, our single-family homes, moderate and above moderate. I've done everything I could to max that out. I've been on the phone with HCD staff. I think I've stretched it to its limit, uh, for how much they'll let us go in that direction. Customarily, they would only do site-specific. So this is kind of a new thing that we're saying, hey, let us count ADUs. These are legitimate ways to build housing. And when it comes to site-specific, we will concentrate our low-income units on publicly-owned properties and encourage mixed-income developments via the RFP process. So this is really what we're, uh, here to talk about. Also known as build apartments above garages, or above parking lots. And the real advantage with this is when a government owns land, they have much, much more control over what happens to that land. They can choose who to sell it to, under what terms. They can require certain amounts of affordable housing. They can require certain amounts of anything because they have, they have control over the property. Compared to a privately-owned site, we can just say, gee, please develop this as housing. Thank you. So vacant sites, uh, right here, these are, this is a map of vacant sites. They're numbered one through eighty. This is in the document. Uh, this was created over months and months and months on multiple spreadsheets and ground-truthing. Uh, and these are basically every vacant lot, um, that we could come up with at the city. So we started with a big GIS analysis, uh, we started with assessor data, we ground-truthed all of these. So if somebody, you know, in the real estate world wanted to say, hey, where is a lot that's just grass in Eureka? We came up with about eighty-four of them. And just as an example, I call this the Harris Street End Cap. This is right by Winco. Uh, you probably drive by it all the time and don't notice it, but that is in fact a vacant lot that is grass that is in a multifamily zone. That thing is just primed. They could turn in a, a, a building permit to build a triplex or a fourplex there and be on their way. So that stuff's not really that creative. It's just be aware that we have inventoried all of this and it's in the, it's in the totals. Non-vacant sites. So this is what we're going to talk about. These are the mostly parking lots. Um, and if you compare the map, uh, whereas our vacant sites were scattered all over, a lot of them in residential zones, you'll see this clustering of non-vacant sites are almost entirely downtown. So the big questions that we're here to get direction on tonight is confirming, should the city focus on developing affordable housing on or above city-owned parking lots, even if parking is lost in some cases? Or should the city allocate affordable units to privately-owned parcels, which is a lot, um, you know, potentially weaker of a strategy? But that is a strategy and that is the most conventional way to do it and what a lot of cities do. And also, is, um, city council okay with a very prescribed development schedule? Each one of these sites has an actual date that the RFP would need to be released. Um, HCD wants to see that. Our housing element, or our housing advocates want to see that. Uh, we're kind of moving into an era where just saying sometime in the next year, we will do this. It's really getting concrete at this point. So, um, as we've kind of discussed before, the rest of my strategy is all based on the assumption that you guys want to go with, um, the first. Focusing on developing affordable housing on and above city-owned parking lots and a couple other similar sites that aren't actually parking lots. Implementation H thirty-four, um, in the housing plan is where all of these details are located. So the big idea behind this is that cities should try really hard to see public lands used to create housing, especially affordable housing, that public lands are already serving the public in some way. Find ways to combine housing with whatever is already there. For example, a parking lot where the public is using from zero feet off the ground to ten feet off the ground, let's let the public use from ten feet off the ground to fifty feet off the ground. And cities across California are already pursuing this strategy. The governor recently, in April, uh, issued an executive order having the Department of General Services tally up all state-owned lands, um, that were deemed surplus. So all the Caltrans, all the state whatevers, and we actually got an email from a piece of Caltrans property. Um, and the expectation is that, um, cities will assist in the development of affordable housing. So this is not, we didn't invent this. This is a statewide concept of really digging deep and trying to make sure public lands can be used to their maximum extent to solve the housing crisis. Objectives. The objective is to build, to build three hundred and seventy-eight units of deed-restricted affordable housing by twenty twenty-eight. Not to plan for, not to set the scene for, but to build. And to build as many market-rate units as is possible on the same sites. Mixed-income developments and mixed-use developments are good. Second objective.
Why would you need, why would you need the deed-restricted affordable housing?
Uh, basically because the state doesn't really believe that low-income people will be guaranteed a spot unless it's deed-restricted. And a lot of the times for the tax credit projects, they need to be deed-restricted as opposed to affordable by design where they're just small. I mean, I believe that some market rate obviously would be affordable by design, but this is something that HCD is requiring and definitely our housing advocates are very adamant about.
What would a deed restriction look like? I mean, I, I, if, if the deed restriction says you can only rent a unit for five hundred dollars a month, I mean, ten years, twenty years from now, that might be completely unrealistic.
The way they're phrased is they have a certain, um, expiration date, typically fifty-five years. And they state that the person that rents the apartment can pay no more than thirty percent of their income, whatever their income is. That's objective one. Objective two is to encourage mixed-income and mixed-use developments. There is an, an established benefit to having people of different incomes, um, in the same building. So what this could look like is a building that has two floors of deed-restricted affordable, a floor of student housing, some condominiums, even some luxury penthouses, uh, mixed-use developments such as corner stores, um, childcare, a rooftop bar, all things like that. And that through this RFP process, we would score those proposals higher uh, because they would be contributing more overall to kind of the urban ecosystem where they would be set up. Maximize development potential. Um, a potential pitfall would be to say, oh, well, we said you just got to build twenty units and they just put them into a little two-story building. Uh, we want to really use our land and that means a three-to-four-story building. If we're going to go, like, we're gonna, we're gonna go for it. Um, so the RFP specifies minimum floor area ratios, um, which is another way to say you're going to need to build a three- or four-story building. It would look like a downtown, uh, core building. High-quality design. We don't want these things to be, you know, ugly, ticky-tacky boxes. Yeah, exactly. Yeah, this, we're, we're not trying to do like Soviet-style, you know, mass planning here. So in our zoning code, um, conveniently recently adopted, we have objective design standards. They include things like facade articulation, roofline articulation, occasionally things like balconies, projecting bay windows. They put a limitation on stucco. The stucco can cover no more than fifty percent of the facade. Uh, you have to have things like a certain amount of masonry and things like that. So these are objective standards. They don't require a human to make a judgment call. You literally just go down the list and pick the design criteria that you want to input in your project if you're a designer. Um, and also they would still go to the design review committee for finishing, kind of the polishing stage. But yes, just a blank stucco box would, would literally not be buildable under this scenario. And this is maybe the most important one. These are active transportation and transit-focused projects that are explicitly intended to reduce greenhouse gas emissions. Um, and they do that by not providing parking for the residents. These are projects that will have deluxe bicycle garages that will be located near the waterfront trail, near, near the, um, uh, the different transit lines and different transit hubs. They may have an electric car share that's included. That's a thing that some cities have done. You live in the apartment and there are four, you know, Teslas and you have an app on your phone and you check out that Tesla and your rent includes, you know, two hours of, of electric car usage per week or something like that. Um, and this is critical. There is just no way that this program can work if the apartments have to provide parking. Absolutely physically and financially impossible. So that's a big part of this. Parking, while we're on the topic. Uh, in our zoning code, you say, how is, how is it even that they would not have to build parking in the first place? So first off, our zoning code says that deed-restricted affordable units just don't have to build parking. And this was done to incentivize affordable housing and to reduce the barriers to the creation of affordable housing. Affordable-by-design units are any unit that's smaller than five hundred square feet. Excuse me, um, those aren't required to build parking either. So that's an incentive to build a whole, you know, floor of studio apartments or one-bedrooms that are just really little, naturally less expensive to rent. You don't have to build parking. Uh, market-rate units may have to build parking. However, we have quite a few exemptions, especially things like, um, including an annual bus pass. Um, that can be used to mitigate it or a car share or being close to a bike, um, bike routes and stuff like that. So there are ways to reduce it, but market-rate units still are required to have some parking potentially. And commercial uses don't have to build, uh, parking. That's been in our code for a long time in our downtown area. Um, if you want to build a four-story office building, you just do it. No parking spaces. Which is kind of interesting, I think, that if somebody previous, you know, prior to our zoning code update said, I want to build a four-story building, we'd be like, okay, cool. What do you want to put in it? And say, oh, I want to put four hundred office workers. We'd say, oh yeah, you don't need any parking. Just build it. It's cool. And say, oh, I want to build a hundred apartments. Be like, whoa, 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 you need a hundred parking spaces. It's, it was kind of an interesting little, you know, split on, on how that worked. Oh, go ahead.
I was envision, envisioning, um, you know, if we're talking about our last meeting, you proposed a apartment complex over the parking lot next door that would maintain the parking lot.
Also known as Site Six, yep.
Uh, and I'm envisioning a, um, somewhere, there's probably a computer program that allows parking spaces to be auctioned off at certain times of the day for certain periods at certain prices related to the past patterns. What's the, can you tell us a story about what someone is really doing out there creatively like that?
You have anticipated the next slide. Nice work. Parking management plan. The state of California just awarded us fifty thousand dollars to study parking management. This is what a lot of cities are doing. There's a great example in San Mateo. And it's basically the idea of saying, hey, cities, do a study. Figure out what on-street parking you have. Figure out what public parking lots you have. Figure out who's using these parking facilities, when they're using it. What do the shoppers need? What do the residents need? And then to come up with very specific thresholds. Set definitions. What does it mean to have a parking problem? What does it mean to have congestion? And then to have administrative procedures, uh, that allow your parking management system to evolve without always coming back to city council. Because that's a common, a common struggle. So what this may look like is in the future, we would have parking permits and the prices would vary depending on the parking lot. So a person could come in and say, I would like a commuter pass. And they would, and then they would say, okay, well, or somebody at the counter would say, well, we have eight lots that, uh, you can use your commuter pass in. Here are the different prices. Say, oh, well, this one's really close to my job, but this one's forty bucks a month. Well, if you think that's a lot, in, for ten bucks a month, you can park in this lot. This lot's smaller, farther away. And if one of those lots was completely booked up, that's an indication that the value of that, that the price that the city is charging to park there is too low. So then every quarter, there, the price would go up slightly. And then likewise, if there's a parking lot that's not being used very much, the price would administratively, by staff, drop five dollars a month in, um, you know, in value, in cost. So that's one mechanism that would be used to regulate parking. The other thing that folks are doing a lot is strategically using on-street parking, especially in shopping districts and like restaurant areas where there's this ex, they really want to be able to have the expectation that the parking space will be open. And it's all digital. All, there's lots of tech involved. There's, um, like the enforcement folks will, um, basically scan license plates. So if you have a parking pass, you won't have little slips of paper. There's no more chalk. And then over time, it generates a lot of data. So when the engineering department or the planning department's evaluating a proposal, they can say, whoa, this is exactly the parking demand. This is how many, these are the commuters that we have within three blocks. Here are the shoppers that we have within three blocks. You know, this is how everything's being used. It's basically just using modern technology to efficiently run a parking system. So that's what we will have, um, at the end of probably this year. Any questions? I think this is kind of fun stuff.
Oh, um, just quickly, are we working with HTMA or HTA with the parking, with this idea? Are we going hand-in-hand? If we're going to be, we're, if we're going to be building, are we working and, and expecting that we're going to be having transportation requirements?
Yeah, we've definitely been in contact with them. Um, most specifically, we worked with them for, to create the annual bus pass, which was something that they didn't have. And that's one of the main mitigation tools, is that every resident, not just every apartment, but every resident will have a, um, an included bus pass in their rent. Um, and fortunately for one of our sites, well, actually downtown and Old Town just have a lot of bus routes. They go everywhere. So yeah, we have been in contact with them and this would, uh, without a doubt, um, you know, probably increase bus ridership, or we would hope. I mean, that's the expectation.
Um, would, how sophisticated of a system have you seen? I'm envisioning something that, um, even rents spaces and time slots. That parking lot over there is pretty full during the day. When on city, you know, city halls in session, it's pretty empty at night when theoretically residents would come home.
Mm-hmm.
Um, so maybe, you know, some residents need a space at night, maybe some residents don't. Do they have computer programs that make adjustments on the fly?
I'm, I can't speak to that specific question, but I know that it's relatively common to have the different user groups broken down into different categories. So yes, you might be able to have the same parking lot. And if you buy a commuter pass to that parking lot, you get it during office hours. If you buy a resident pass to that parking lot, you get it during evening hours and, you know, overnight, those types of things. There's a lot of science that has went on in the parking management field. It is not, it's not crude. Okay. And finally, shovel-ready proj, projects. Uh, one challenge, especially in California, is that there are many ways that a project can die. Many unforeseen hurdles that can, uh, you know, really slow down the process. So we've made every attempt to come up with, um, to really think through the entire process and make sure that as we roll out this program, it doesn't, you know, get stopped on a technicality. One of those is CEQA, and you'll see in the draft, we have a list of exemptions and kind of a strategy to get through, um, CEQA. Also traffic, these have, um, all of these sites have been presented to the engineering department, um, who has given them an who has given them an overview, uh, and will continue to review them when the RFPs are released. But all of the sites proposed here can accommodate a large apartment building, basically. Uh, the parking assessment district, um, somewhat uniquely, we had a parking assessment district that was created in the fifties and bonds were issued and the funds generated were used to buy land and build parking lots for the sites that would see their parking eliminated. And there are a couple, we'll get into it. There are specific state laws we need to follow to make sure that when it's voted, that city council can vote to allow that public use to go away. We've thought of that. Also, general plan consistency. We wanted to make sure that our environmental analysis and our EIR, that was completed for the general plan, included this amount of development, you know, so we didn't get outside the boundaries. Fortunately, our general plan EIR evaluated twice the number of units. So we're trying to get our arena, which is nine hundred and fifty-two. The EIR considered a growth of approximately two thousand units. So we're, we're well within our general plan EIR. And also, just to point out, the density bonus law is a great statute that really helps developers get, get dirt moving on affordable housing projects and these developments would also qualify. So there are a few breaks in state statute that could also be used to move this forward. So non-vacant sites, let's just kick it off. The first one, um, all the sites are numbered in the order that they're scheduled for release. So you can just kind of track them chronologically.
You know what Pedro on?
Oh, um. Okay. So, um, City Hall Parking Lot, Old City Hall. Okay, I'm gonna actually, wish I would've done this backwards. Okay, here is a rendering of the parking lot behind Mazati's. Just to the right, you can see that brick building, that little sliver of it. That's the Carson Block. This is the view from, was it Tail Waggers, something or other? So that's the corner that the camera is sitting on. So last year, we hired, um, Cash Bouja's office, actually Valerie put together a, an evaluation of the site to see what an apartment building would actually look like. This one proposes to maintain the parking and it's a four-story building. So to give you an idea, this is a really a great example because the parking lots are all almost exactly the same size and they're all on urban lots. So this would be kind of a, a, a great example of what we might see out the window of City Hall on this side. This is a great example of what we might see out City Hall window on the other side. So breaking down, here's an example, um, ground floor level. So again, this site is actually proposed to eliminate the parking currently. This concept preserves the parking. So in the situations like at City Hall, um, this is something that we might see. So you can see it's mostly like a parking lot. You pull in, you have parking spaces. She drew some retail spaces on the corner to increase activity. And then you can see that there's the residential lobby and then the two staircases that go up and the trash in the corner against the alley. These are how apartments could be stacked in. These are about four hundred square foot one bedrooms. And then there's a two-bedroom unit in the corner. And again, it's actually a twelve, or it's actually an L-shaped, uh, building just because you need sunlight and you need light in all the units. So it's kind of tricky to build a square, uh, building for apartments of those dimensions. And then this is the rooftop, uh, she drew in a bar, restaurant, or penthouse apartment. So that would look out over the Carson Block, um, all the way to Arcade. So, sorry, I put this in reverse order. So the RFP re, the release date would be January first. The site area is, um, almost thirteen thousand square feet. The minimum affordable units would be five very low income and five low income. The minimum, so they, that's obviously just the minimum. They could do thirty, forty, fifty if they wanted to. This is just to make them eligible to receive the, you know, the project. The minimum floor area ratio would be three point O, which is, uh, a multiplier on the site area. So that would result in a building that can be no smaller than thirty-eight thousand square feet. So the reason that's there is to make sure that somebody doesn't propose a building that only contains ten apartments and is only two stories tall. You know, we, this site is so important. It has so much potential because it's right in the middle of Old Town. It can do so much more, um, even if it had a bunch of office space in it, you know. We don't wanna sell ourselves short, so they would need to build a legitimate-sized building. Thirty-eight thousand square feet is not, is not nothing. And public parking would be eliminated. We, I got in contact with the engineering department and had them look through the data on parking lot usage. And there actually is enough capacity as of today for the surrounding city-owned parking lots to absorb the spaces that are used in this parking lot. So something to be aware of. Oh, oh, pardon. I took that out. Yeah, this is third, this is Third and G. Uh, Third Street and, and G Street. Yeah, so this is, um, remember where old Mazati's was? Everybody know where Mazati's was? Directly behind Mazati's in Old Town. So that is Site One. So again, that one's proposed, oh.
So, um, it looks like there's some parking spaces on the outside in the L shape, in the inside of the L. Are those parking spaces?
Uh, yeah, those are open to the sky. The, those are just, yeah, those are just leftover parking spaces.
So it's not eliminating parking. It's just eliminating.
No, under the way the draft is written, there would be apartments on the whole ground level or retail. There would be no, all of the publicly-owned parking spaces would go away completely. This is just a scenario for the sites that would maintain the public parking lot. So yeah, and that's a, that's one of the big questions that we're gonna, we're gonna hash out. Okay, so Sunny in Myrtle. So when you're on Myrtle Ave and you're driving southeast, there's a Shell Station, there's a little Chinese restaurant, I think it's called the Tea House. Right there, and I really put these pictures in the wrong, the wrong spot. It looks like that. You see that big parking lot right in the center? Just to the left is the little Chinese restaurant. This is a city-owned parking lot that is very, very underutilized. It's so underused that the engineering department doesn't actually even, uh, do counts on how often it's used. I guess it just isn't, isn't really worth it. So you can see it on here, it's way out on Myrtle. And this would have an RFP release date at the same time, uh, January first, twenty twenty. This site's a little bigger. It's eighteen thousand square feet. And its minimum affordable units would be fifteen very low income and five low income. And its minimum FAR would be a little lower because, um, it's a bigger site. So someone would have to construct a thirty-six thousand square foot building. And again, because this site is so underutilized, uh, working with the Public Works Department and Engineering, this was one that we think, um, could definitely go away. It's not really providing that much parking in any capacity to any business or anything else. Okay, so that was Site Two. Site Three is a city parking lot at the corner of Eighth and G. So this is right here, just to your left. You can see the little sign for the Eureka Inn. That's looking at the car lot straight ahead. Everyone kind of know where we are. This is a city-owned parking lot, um, with a very low utilization rate. I believe it's seven percent. Folks really just don't park there. And there's abundant on-street parking. So this was another one that we identified that we think could just lose the public parking lot completely. And apartments could be built on the ground floor and the second floor and the third floor and so on. So the site's, um, pretty similar to Old City Hall. It's, uh, uh, fourteen thousand, six hundred, sixty-eight square feet. Again, they would have to build fifteen very low income and five low-income units. And the minimum FAR would be three, which would result in a forty-four thousand square foot building. And the public parking would be eliminated. There's four sites. The sites one through four would see their parking eliminated. The other sites would need to maintain the parking on the ground level. Sixth and M, this is just down the street, one block that way. Uh, you can see City Hall in the distance. It's that taller building off to the left down, uh, Sixth Street. Again, this is a city-owned parking lot. And, uh, thirteen thousand square feet. So again, you're kind of seeing the pattern. We're saying about twenty low-income units on each and about a forty thousand square foot building. So this one is the last one that we would propose to have the parking eliminated completely. Um, and then whatever usage would there would honestly just spill out into the adjacent, um, you know, streets. Site Five is City Hall Parking Lot. This one would be released on January first, twenty twenty-one. They're staggered, the release dates are staggered every six months. Again, very comparable. These are all very, very similar sites. They're all about the same size. And most of them need to provide twenty units of affordable housing and a forty thousand square foot building. And this one, again, we've switched over into the ones that need to maintain parking. So this is the one on this side of the building over by the highway looking at the jail. Go ahead.
Have, has city done any studies on what percentage of our residents? How, how many cars per resident on average does Eureka currently have?
That, we don't have that data that I've ever heard of. However, it's challenging to estimate because if you're trying to make a development to encourage people to drive less or to take the bus or to, or to, you know, ride their bike, it's, it's not a perfect science, um, you know, and it's really hard to find what numbers to make those assumptions. Because if you did a study in a suburban area of an apartment complex where there was two parking spaces for every unit, you'd probably see a whole bunch of cars. It'd be convenient and free and included. If you were in a downtown, you know, in a dense city, you would see all kinds of apartment buildings that might be, you know, ten stories tall. It would have very low usage.
The concern I have is that you've added roughly a hundred, two hundred, between a hundred and two hundred new units and, uh, no parking. So, I mean, is that really what the city wants? And, and I'm, um, just for the record, uh, I'm, I'm not really interested in us trying to dictate what residents need to do in terms of their driving habits. I'm more interested in us listening to them, what they want to do with their driving habits, and then trying to use some market-based decisions to, to kind of help that. I mean, if, if people, if we build, just use this one as an example. If we build a bunch of apartments, keep the parking and demand for the parking increases s- so much that people are willing to pay exorbitant rates, well, that's money into the city that can be used for other things and not, uh, and at the same time, people have the option of parking whether they want to or not. So I, I, I'd, I'd be interested in whatever, how we might be able to get some data, you know, to figure out where that balance, I would hate to build all four of these with no parking and to discover that we've got this huge, um, you know, outcry for more parking in these areas from people that already live and work there because people that are moving in the apartments are now parking their cars, you know, all along the streets and taking everybody else's parking. That's my thought, my concern.
Oh, go ahead.
When we're doing these, um, RFPs, hypothetical RFPs, you know, there, there's minimum, like, very low-income housing requirements or low-income housing requirements. Are there, can we, um, also make minimum, uh, in like mid-priced or higher-level housing requirements? You know, I mean, so basically, you know, the sort of the, the understory for that is just that, is there a way of ensuring that there's a real mix of people and incomes and, you know, kind of congregating together in the city?
I think the short answer is yes. You know, we can write the RFP however we want. The one warning I've heard from developers is that the more stipulations you put on it, the harder it is for them to make it pencil. Uh, you know, cause you're making this very narrow path that they need to, they need to walk down. But we have a ton of control over, over how we score them. So if we really wanted mixed, mixed units, we could say, we're gonna do a, a times-three multiplier if your project contains at least ten percent market rate. The same way if we really wanted to incentivize childcare, it would be like ten points on your score if you put a childcare facility in it. We can adjust those proportions however we want.
Now that you've, um, that you, you, you've identified these four possible places, do you contact the developers or do developers just know these kind of things? How, how do, how do these four parking, these four illustrations you have get out to the public that they could possibly meet our criteria?
Uh, the RFPs are publicized, so we would undertake a process of, of posting them online in the places where RFPs for development typically go. We would contact our existing developers, both market rate and affordable. I would like to reach out to every city in Northern California, all the way down to Sacramento and just say, hey, tell us who your developers are. Email me a list, you know, and we'll send it straight to their inboxes and say, hey, we want a four-story building full of housing. Please consider this.
So we go out and look for it?
Yeah, yeah, we go out. It's, it's private, private dollars that are gonna build these buildings cause it's not gonna be general fund money. Okay. So, again, I'm getting, just gonna speed this up a little bit because these are very similar parking lots. The next one is, um, City Hall on Sixth Street. Oh, I'm putting an extra little graphic in there. Uh, Third and E. So this is just by the Visitor Center. This is where the annex is. There's a L-shaped parking lot. Everyone know where, where we're talking about in Old Town, uh, by Clark Plaza. So this one would, again, need to maintain the parking and it would just be a three or four-story apartment building downtown. The next one is the city-owned parking lot next to the Lloyd Building. We own that right there on, uh, Fifth Street. So again, that would be the same thing, four-story building, probably twenty, forty, fifty apartments. Fourth and G is another parking lot that we have. It's a little bit oversized. It's almost eighteen thousand square feet. It's right here. It's across from the Arkley, um, Center for the Performing Arts. It looks right at the mural that has, um, Louis Armstrong on it. So this one would be a little bigger site. We allocated twenty-five units, uh, to that instead of twenty. The next site, I call it Banana Hut Parking Lot because it's right next to Banana Hut. You can call it the Umpqua Parking Lot, um, same thing. And here's the tally. So again, there are ten sites. And we've drawn the line in the sand saying that the first four could probably lose the parking realistically, while sites five through ten need to keep the ground level as public parking. We think it will provide quite an incentive to a developer to not have to maintain that ground-level parking lot. The real rough numbers I've heard is that it would add around a million to a million and a half dollars to the project cost. So it's not insurmountable. I've talked to developers and said, yeah, we could do that. Most recently, um, Chris Dard at Danco, he's like, yeah, we could build the parking podium. It just makes it less attractive. It just makes it harder to get it to pencil. So it's really just a judgment call of saying, you know, you don't, you don't wanna give away the boat, but you also wanna, you know, you wanna stack the deck in your favor. So hopefully, when these first couple RFPs come out, developers jump on it and we have, you know, four job sites and, you know, a crane. So anyway, this is where we have drawn the line, whether or not that line needs to move back in one way or the other is up for debate.
And all these proposals right now, they'll come before a planning commission?
Absolutely, yep. This whole draft will come before a planning commission and city council again. But we're just trying to, trying to figure out where we are earlier. Okay. Portion of Cooper Gulch. We have some folks in the audience. So again, I say public lands, the, across the state, people aren't only looking at city parking lots. They're also looking at stuff like parkland and open space. And what we came across was a portion of Cooper Gulch that came up in our GIS analysis. And we found this lot that was immediate, that was located right next to the Little Rec Center, um, right there. So the skate park is up to the left. The Montessori School is just, just to the top. And this site came out for a couple reasons. The first was, it didn't appear to have, um, wetlands or a stream on it. It appeared to be relatively flat and dry. It was served by utilities. It was within walking distance of job centers. A lot of jobs are, you know, within a ten-minute walk of right there. Uh, had the benefit for family housing, whereas if a kid was growing up there, maybe didn't have a lot of money, would have a playground, would have a park to run around in, would have a skate park. And there's an after-school, um, program that's literally in the parking lot. So it checked a lot of boxes from a land use perspective. Now, obviously, parks are very, very valuable. Um, people are very passionate about their parks. So this was a site that, you know, we included. I was a little bit nervous about including it. But because it's located up kind of in the corner of the park between the cemetery and an existing parking lot and building, it didn't seem that outrageous to me, or at least not enough to not include it. So this is a site that is available. We would need to rezone it, which would be different than the other sites. The other sites are already lo, are already zoned downtown and downtown west. Those allow housing by right. Uh, this is zoned public. So if you decided to move forward on this, the city would need to begin the process to rezone and upzone it to a zone that would allow a multi-story apartment building. And, yeah, that would basically be it. So we can talk about it or you can simmer on it. We can come back. So, we can talk about it or you can simmer on it, we can come back.
I have a really insane thought. So, and I haven't thought this through, so bear with me. I should not say it in public. So, when we're talking about building above parking lots, one of the things when I'm talking about with the Children's Initiative that comes up over and over and over and over again is the lack of things to do on rainy days. Can we build housing above one of our flat parks and then put something around it and have an indoor soccer field, indoor track, someplace that kids could go? Just putting it out there as a, something I thought of as you were talking.
Maybe some racquetball courts.
Things that people can do on a rainy day and provide us with a big flat place for housing. And I'm sure it will upset a lot of people, but I thought I'd throw it out.
That could be, yeah, with a 15-foot ceiling on the first level, it'd be pretty airy under there. I like that idea. You guys are the decision-makers. Okay, so, this is the Cooper Gulch concept. That would get us 20 units. And this one's kind, this one's kind of interesting. I'm just going to snip right to the picture. So, Broadway and McCullin's.
Brian, can I just go back? So, for Cooper Gulch, you wouldn't be doing five stories. You'd be doing something much smaller?
It'd be two stories, maybe three. Yeah, no, it would be a much smaller, much smaller building, yeah.
Just curious, okay.
Yeah.
And you wouldn't need parking in that one, right? Because there's parking all over.
Yeah, it would be ideal from that perspective because the parking demand during daylight hours is in business areas, you know, because people leave their homes. They leave residential areas, you know, and then they drive to commercial areas to work. And then residential parking demand picks up in the evening. So, it's kind of handy. Like, people would be arriving back from their jobs at seven, which is when people are leaving the park anyway. So, yeah.
And then one other thing with the, can you hear me? With the parking lots, I know you mentioned developers are less likely to, or it's expensive to do the parking lot on the bottom floor. However, if they were the ones to get like at least a percentage of the income that was made of the parking, like, they knew over time they're getting a continued percentage of parking costs, I mean, income, you know, that's brought in for those lots, maybe.
Okay. It's an interesting idea. Any more on that? Okay. So, this site, Broadway and McCullin. This is the view pointed south. There's this retaining wall. It's got all the plants hanging off it. The cemetery is at the top of the hill. We learned about this site when the Department of General Services emailed us about it and said, hey, Caltrans owns this. Will you help find a way to get affordable housing built on it? So, we're including it in the inventory because the state of California thinks we should. It might be a good site for permanent supportive housing, which is something we need. And then it's also kind of nice, oh, there's a better picture. So, the yellow, kind of the yellow box is the actual parcel. However, that site that has the red line around it is for sale currently in my understanding. So, there might be the possibility that working with some affordable housing developer could maybe acquire that site next to it and it could become, yeah, affordable housing. So, that's in the mix as well. And it would be called out to be specifically very low-income in our, in our estimation. Not least because the state is requiring that when they identify sites via this initiative, they're used for housing. It's not a, you know, it couldn't be a luxury condo. It needs to be affordable housing there. So, if we did that, the city would begin the process to rezone or upzone. The site is most likely a candidate to become a part of service commercial, which wouldn't have a cap on density. And then again, the city will contact the Department of General Services and Caltrans no later than the middle of next summer. And then worked with them on an ongoing basis to help piece together financial, you know, resources and work with the county. And there's all kinds of, no place like home funds and it's a whole tangled soup of government programs, but hopefully to get a development here. Questions on that? And finally, the Sheriff's Woodlot. Is everyone familiar with this? This is kind of a unique situation. That's the hospital. This is 23rd Street and this is Harrison. So, one of the Ramones is over here somewhere, one of these. So, this is kind of odd. It's odd because this zone is hospital-medical and it's in the middle of the city. And this use is heavy industrial. It's not zoned heavy industrial, it's zoned public. But it's actually a heavy industrial use. What they do is they take logs, truck them in, big diesel trucks, and then they saw them up and cut them into firewood. So, they create noise, vibration, and truck traffic, which are typically the hallmarks of a heavy industrial use. And they do that wedged between a middle school and a hospital and a single-family residential zone. So, to say the least, it's what you would call an incompatible land use. However, it's flat, appears well-drained, and it's served by utilities. So, this site is kind of in our view, well-suited to a bigger, more conventional affordable housing-type development, something with around 80 units. And that site is so big, you know, it's two and a half acres, that it wouldn't be one of those dense kind of urban deals. It would have, you know, parking lots and it would be a whole thing. So, the way, what this draft proposes is that we would contact the county of Humboldt no sooner or no later than June 1st, 2022, and start working with them to hopefully maybe relocate that use, find a way that it could go away, something, and then rezone, upzone the land to get some housing built there. That's the concept.
Are they renting this piece of property if the city owns it?
No, no, the city doesn't own it. This is county-owned. This is the first, well, the last two sites and the McCullin and Broadway one are both, well, that one's owned by Caltrans, this one's owned by the county.
So, these last three are not owned by us?
Correct.
They're just public lands?
Yeah, or the last, the last two. The last two are. Broadway and McCullin, did I miss one? Yeah. Yeah, we own, we own Cooper Gulch. So, this one would, yeah, would make it be a really good opportunity for us to get a pretty big-sized development in. And that's, that's it. We haven't brought it up to the county yet? Oh, go ahead.
I, I would think that close to medical care, that would, might be your mark for seniors, low-income seniors.
That's another, low-income seniors or low-income people. That could, yeah, I didn't think about that. But man, that could really be a great, great use for, yeah, low-income, deed-restricted senior housing right there by the hospital.
At least a portion of it. You know, make a significant amount of a target at low-income seniors that are going to naturally need, not to offend anyone here, but older people go to the doctor more, I've discovered.
No, that's fantastic idea. Yeah, we, and we can even add that in to say, like, senior housing is encouraged or something along those lines for that site.
So, I have a question specifically about this site. Would it be possible, this is the last one, right?
Yep, this is it. Site 13.
That would be offered potentially. Would it be possible to kind of move it earlier on the list? In that way, that would give us more time to kind of assess some of the parking impacts of the other sites in Old Town? Or is there a reason why it's the last site? I mean, I know it would require coordination with the county.
That was the only reason I put it later because I just thought it would be multi, I mean, it could just take years to relocate it. And it's the, they do a program there for work release for inmates. Yeah, so I feel like, I don't know, I just, I estimated that this would take longer and then I front-loaded the sites that I thought we, we had the most control over and we could really get out.
Sure. Yeah, I, I think my question is, is there a way that we can kind of assess parking needs as this goes so that way we're not, you know, I, I mean, ideally, right? People would just start using more public transit and things like that. And I don't think that's going to be, you know, I think that's going to be maybe a more gradual process potentially.
So, if I'm understanding you right, in the housing element, we wouldn't specify that parking can be eliminated or parking has to be maintained. We would say parking may be maintained or may be eliminated. We'll decide when we release the RFP? Is that?
And I would, and I would think putting as little restrictions on us in this housing plan to Sacramento would be the ideal. I mean, give them the minimum that they need, but leave us as much flexibility. And I'm even concerned about the order of this. Why in the world would we want to do all four, the first four projects to be no parking? Let's, let's, let's layer it in a little bit so we can assess it as we go. And I don't even know why we need, we could have dates when the RFPs would go forward without even necessarily assigning the lots connected with those RFPs.
That's a, that's a possibility. The conversation I've had with HCD is they want more specificity on this stuff. Just, you know, just to be clear, like, in our conversations, because we've put so many, so many of our eggs in this basket that they want specifics, like, real, real specifics of what we're going to do on what date.
But what happens, I mean, if we build it, there's no guarantee that the people will come. I mean, this, this is a great idea. I like it. But if we build one and it doesn't get rented and we're on the hook to build two, three, four, and five right after, there, I mean, I feel like there needs to be some flexibility for us.
Yeah, that, yeah, we could stop the program at that point. We have to do annual monitoring on our success of these, of these programs. So, in that monitoring, if we built one of these sites and it was a colossal failure, then actually HCD would tell us to stop doing this. Like, you know, because it just wasn't, like, it wasn't working. They would say, you need to pick a strategy. Or, for example, if just no one responded to the RFPs, they would say, hey, look, you were really confident this was going to work. It's not working. Come up with an alternative. So, yeah, this, this isn't, it's not set in stone. It's more where we're starting.
Yeah, I think I would be more comfortable too if it was not all of them, yeah, if it was staggered. So, you had one where you were taking the parking and then one where you had to maintain the parking. Maybe two where you maintained the parking and then another where you took away the parking so that people didn't feel that impact as strongly immediately. Yeah.
Okay, like a one, a two, and a one and kind of a, lose it, keep it, keep it, lose it, keep it, keep it. Kind of the ratio? Okay. Yeah, I know, I can re, I can retool that really easy. And maybe that's, yeah, maybe that is a lot stronger way to do it if the second one maintains the parking that proves the concept.
And I would think every one of these, every individual one would need to come, go through the process to receive public input so the specific neighbors, I mean, that's a whole other question. You know, the whole NIMBY problem, I suspect we're going to run into that. And so, you know, people need to know that the state's requiring some of it and that there's been, you know, elections have consequences. And so, there's a certain amount of that process we're going to have to get through. But I would think it would really be important for each one of these projects to come before the planning commission, city council, so that the residents in that specific area can give their input. Before we decide we're building this with or without parking.
Yeah. And just to be clear, when we say with or without parking, it's maintaining the existing public parking or not? Just so we're all on the same page, there is no way to provide parking for the apartments. Okay. Cool. Yeah.
I, I know this was already asked in a way, but, but I think, you know, just a question that continues to lurk is, is how do we coordinate with HTA about the increased transit needs as we develop, you know, in, I mean, I'm, because, you know, just for sure, I'm all, I think we do need to look at a driving-less future for all of us. But, you know, again, like, I think we need to simultaneously, like, how do we coordinate transit along with this?
One thing that's really common is to get letters of support. Would that be helpful if we reached out to them prior to adopting the housing element and just kind of said, hey, run these scenarios? If all of these were built and how many riders, you know, and everybody was a rider, what impact would that have? And kind of put it on them to run the, run the model themselves. I would imagine they would like it. I think they want more riders.
I mean, maybe what impact might it have? And also, how might they increase the availability of public transit along with this?
Just thinking about the future, you know, probably 50 years from now, there will probably be self-driving cars where you could just, they'll be on the road all the time and you can just rent a ride whenever you need it and it'll be back on the road. Where driving probably could be eliminated. So, just thinking 50, 100 years from now in Eureka, many people might not even need to own a vehicle.
It's a long time for that, though.
Definitely. Hey, maybe even 10, 15 years.
Are we all good? Do you have more to go? Oh, is that, is that the end of your presentation?
That is, that is the presentation, yeah. We can just keep talking or not?
Okay, Councilman Messner.
I know that little L shape. I just want to go back to that because that could be necessary, that could be a part of keeping it as a parking area. When you said it needed to look like an L because of the windows, it looks like there's probably at least, I don't know.
Yeah, it's the very first one.
Oh, the very, oh, goodness. Whoa, we can get back there.
It looks like there's quite a bit of options for parking there, so, up in that corner?
Yeah.
It just seemed like that might be worth putting in, like, that needs, that there should be parking because there are all those buildings and that allows for the public parking as well as options. Or you could do half and half or something like that.
Oh, okay, so you mean, like, eliminate two-thirds of the ground-level parking, but leave like a very small public parking lot with like six or eight spaces? Kind of thing?
So, you're, no matter what, on all these buildings, the first level's always going to be parking for residents? Is that what you're saying, for these four? Okay, that's what I thought.
Yeah, I know.
So, right now, you have no parking on those first four was what you, I heard.
Correct.
And that's not just public, that's also resident, right?
No public parking, no resident parking.
So, my suggestion would be that in that section, that that would at least be maintained as some parking. So, there's at least eight or 10 more spots added rather than just eliminating parking altogether.
Oh, yeah. That makes, that makes sense.
Talking about site one and the concern of lack of parking, there is a city parking lot behind Lost Coast Brewery. What if we were to do an RFP for a parking garage or something like that to help increase parking density by, you know, three or four-story high parking structure? Would that help eliminate concern?
Fantastic question. First off, that is a centerpiece in the parking management plan. So, what cities are doing is they're not gambling on, do we build a garage and then we can't pay for it? Because a garage costs $7, $8 million. What they do is set thresholds. So, they say, when our parking demand is X, and we're going to keep measuring it every year, and when people are paying X amount per year and we can make this math problem work, it, it tells, it basically tells the city what to do. It says, this is the point when you should build a parking garage because you can pay for it. But don't build it until you can pay for it. It's kind of the...
But that could be on the table later on with that site, at least.
That's why we didn't touch it. When you build a parking garage, you need to have a really big site to accommodate the ramps that you drive through. And all of these quarter blocks are too small to contain a parking garage. So, we've kind of left that big site behind Lost Coast open to that. Because, yeah, hopefully, man, wouldn't that be fantastic? In like 10, 20 years, we were just so bustling that, you know, we could afford to build a four-story parking garage and fill it up, you know, with shoppers and visitors and they'd be willing to pay five bucks to do it.
And as you, as you might imagine, building a three-story parking garage is going to be exponentially more expensive than maintaining three ground-level parking lots with residential built above it. That multi-story parking garages are tremendously expensive to build compared to other forms of construction.
They're usually $30,000 to $50,000 per space is what it costs in a parking garage. So, you got to really, so then you got to do the math, right? Because then you, you have to, you have to, you know, take a loan out, you know, to build it. So, then you're paying interest on your $8 million. So, you need to generate, like, you need people parked in that spot and you need them paying like $2 an hour all day, every day for a decade, you know, to make it work. It's not for the faint of heart to build a parking garage.
I'm curious why number one is one that you chose to build to the ground and you didn't start that on the, try to maintain that parking. I mean, that's the densest area.
That's where I started.
That's what I thought it was supposed to be.
Truth be told, I don't, Girving's back there. Girving recommended it. Yeah, he said... It was a little, I, I was more conservative on it, you know? I said like, well, this is too sensitive. I don't want to scare people off. And he said, you know, we got the capacity, like, like... And he said, you know, we got the capacity, like, let's make a showpiece, you know, flagship, just like right out of the gate. I mean, he didn't say that part. That was me. But I mean, I think that there is, there's a symbolic value to a big, to a big development. And having something go in there that's just a, just a big, beautiful, shiny development with a crane and a whole thing. I think that sends a really strong message.
Use a crane and keep the parking lot on the bottom is kind of what I'm thinking.
That's why we're here. If we can, you know, if you, if you want to forego the, if you want to maintain that full first deck of parking, we can do that with the stroke of a, stroke of a mouse.
And, and I think that's why it's important for each one of these projects to have the kind of public input that, that, that the people that live and work there already can tell us what their concerns are.
Um, if you're, you know, looking for a direction or something, at least for me, I, I'm comfortable with this entire plan overall. I think it's a, it's, it's a very exciting concept of daring, you might say in some scenarios. But say, let's just go for it and see what happens. Let's see who, see what the interest is.
No, there's no public comment on this. No, we did it at the beginning for a special meeting.
So just, just to be clear, my draft currently says sites one through four, the ground-level public parking doesn't need to be maintained. Do you want that to change? Because I, I gotta write something in the document.
Uh, ground level does not need to be, um, one, so one through four?
One through four. The rest of them all have to maintain the ground-level parking. One through four as written don't need to maintain the parking.
I'd like to see one maintain it. But I would, I would be fine with two through four not.
Kim? So I thought we discussed a moment ago that we would do this on a case-by-case basis. So that we didn't have any speci- speci-
Specifics.
That's exactly the word I'm thinking of. I worked all day, I'm tired. Um, and each project would stand alone. So we could look at the first project, we could see how that looks and go from there. And get public input, see what people think, find out how much it's gonna cost to maintain, what the benefits are, what the non-benefits are. Um, but I think that that's a better idea than trying to specify each, you know, all the projects before they're built. And I think the other thing to consider is that we're doing one project at a time, it seems. And I think that that's a really important consideration. Um, you know, it wasn't all, one wasn't built in a day, right? So I appreciate this and all of this that you've brought forward. I think it's gonna be fantastic.
And just to, for, to clarify, as I understand it, this is a draft. You'll finalize this, you'll bring this before the Pl- Planning Commission where we'll have public input and discussion. And then we'll send a recommendation to City Council where there will be more public input and discussion. All that's gotta get done by the end of the year, of course. What happens if we're not done by December thirty-first, twenty nineteen?
Um, well, the short answer is we will be penalized under a state law that I don't remember the name. Uh, basically, we will be forced from an eight-year update cycle to a four-year update cycle. A- and we could be sued. Yeah, they've, they've put some teeth. I mean, for the longest time, HCD had really no, no power and cities just ignored them. Now they have the power to levy fines of a hundred thousand dollars per day. It's like, or maybe per month. It's, it's wild. That, that's take you to court. They're, they're serious now. Of course, we're not Santa Monica. I don't think we would be their main target.
And do either of you guys have anything to say?
Well, considering, I kind of liked your idea about doing something with, in the winter activities. Because as, when you are reducing parking, you're encouraging more people to take other modes of transportation. Going back to including, um, you know, what the transportation of, like, the public spec is gonna be on that. But as well as we have a lot of rain, we know that. And so if we are encouraging other modes of transportation or off-street parking, it would be awesome to include other things to do. Or, I mean, yeah, I mean, if we're gonna have apartments built over, um, parking, it would be cool to have some indoor plexes that are in our downtown area that are easy to get to. Um, that encourage more community spaces of people hanging out or just doing health-driven things. Um, and, and that's, I mean, there are direct correlations when you start making more affordable housing and or urbanizing areas that, you know, you are limiting people having cars. And then you are encouraging other modes of transportation. It's a direct link to that. So I think that's a very smart idea. I like that.
Well, I'm glad I asked then. Any other comments, uh, Councilman Castellano?
Probably have some other comments, but, uh, related to that, um, it doesn't seem like, you know, the scoring system within the RFP, we really need to hash out at this particular point. But, um, I would love to see in those scoring systems, a real look at the needs and interests of our community. And, you know, thinking about, you know, like artist housing or cooperatives or, you know, childcare centers or playgrounds. Or, you know, whatever the, the things we want to see that would create a really cool, vibrant downtown. Um, as part of the scoring process, you know? Um, because I think it could actually be really kind of fun to see what could come, um, with some creative thought about it.
Do we have any other comments? Do you feel like you have the direction you need?
Yeah, that's, that's fantastic, yeah.
All right. I think then we get to adjourn, right? Yes, no? Do you have one more comment?
I had other things to say, I was just polite. Sorry. Um, let's see. I personally would be fine with the first one being all structure, no parking, personally. Just to throw my opinion out there, but I don't mind if I'm overruled. Um, but, but, you know, to me, I'm, as someone who has, you know, a business and spends a lot of time in Old Town. I think actually like more people living and playing and going out to eat and going to businesses in Old Town is a really, actually would be a very, uh, a great benefit economically. Um, so I think it'd be great to see more people there. Um, and then, you know, something of course, that, um, we haven't mentioned, and I just wanna mention it, is that, um, you know, the, the Reno numbers don't specifically address homelessness or, um, or those kinds of needs. Um, that's something that I think is important to keep emphasizing where we can and, you know, in our planning. And, um, you know, just, I, I just wanna keep bringing it to the table. Um, as, as part of my responsibility to all of the people in, in Eureka.
We all done? Anybody else? Y'all good? All right. With that, we're adjourned.